I remember that building in that place.
Yeah.
I believe it was a drive right down here on the corner. So this is up.
Yeah, I don't think he's doing it well.
No. He's been leaving for decades.
Yeah. Uh, did you draw?
Yeah, my aunt or my non-sister called me. We still have them.
All right, so we got it.
So here's one copy. It's strange. So do you have a stomach or one of everything else? Anything or just all of them?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
See, I had no smell and no taste. That's why they kept me. The reason is the armor and the high face. Well, I don't know, all your symptoms show. But I kept me down in the middle.
Oh, God, no.
Because the last time they did that, I said to the kid, they said, "It tastes like rain." He says, "Much as I take it, ah, ah."
So he came home. He had a stomach bug. We had to ask him about it at school. And the school nurse at school told us that he'd been going around. So when he came home, I didn't get to him. I'll leave you on the first.
Oh, but there is a need, so we can't take long.
All right. Is it?
They may not.
I think, I think, yeah, when you were staying back in the work cabinet.
Oh, you see that? I went to the boot camp. But I got the two shots and then you went to the boot camp.
Yeah.
I got six of them. Because right after that, I went to the hall.
So, uh, I don't feel like you have a third. I didn't really think so. But if there's something showing, the second day, I mean, the first day when I woke up, I could call it a sleep, a sleep. The second day, I was high.
Not even.
No, no.
My son got the same one and he got this one.
Seven hundred. Three hundred.
Seven hundred he did. And now.
There it was, really.
He was, he definitely used the, he's.
Oh, that's good. Oh, that's all you want.
Yeah.
I'm sure I can be able to keep my butt.
Yeah. No, because I don't have a chance to make a transition. I know just now today was approved that I am there in New York.
You are.
So, so I know we had checked there long.
Go there.
Oh.
See, I have confidence. You saw it. Then I can do it from there. Oh, my God.
She's. She was, she was. Oh.
I don't want any, uh, food for free.
Yes. Um, yeah. Then there's only one. Yeah, yes, I got fairly long.
Get out of there.
No, if you were, it's like hours or something.
I don't know. I think that was accidentally. You just leave this if you're there.
We have stuff. But we have. In the past, I'm sure I haven't seen a lot of this stuff. We've been listening.
Because Greg had to go pee in his head. Something he wants.
He didn't speak.
Cool.
He's all scared.
Not hurt. I don't know who did the seating arrangement.
There's kind of so. Um, here's one of them. Can I give you an idea of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi.
Yeah.
There he is.
And I'm here. Is my non-do? Hey, hey.
It's good to see you.
I know, right? Live instead of through a camera. Yeah. Crazy. I want to have a Corvette that is out.
Yes, sorry.
Do you have a Corvette that's that?
Um, that's the neighbor's, the, the park there, right?
Uh, neighbor across the street. Got it. Good.
See, I'm a C H. I think the Cadillac was nice. He'd ride a roving Cadillac anytime. So do you have a tiny? The attempt is only if we want to be in control of all, all of that. All coming. Mr. Urban? Do you remember? Mr. Urban? No, no. Sir, sir.
Sheriff.
Nice to meet you. Thompson.
Oh, okay. Got it, okay. Don't have to be in the audience. Yeah, 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 yeah. So I'm here watching. At work, yeah. Cool.
Yes. Yeah.
Uh, that's my twenty. All right, it's done, right? Definitely.
Good. Nice to meet you.
Yep.
How many, no, I'm going to see you later. Yes. Seriously? Why do I not have Wi-Fi? So, um, turn off the phone. Um, just while we're waiting, I wanted everyone to know. I lost Wi-Fi. Why did I lose Wi-Fi? The government sent me the new contract. Because we'd already voted on that. This is outside with, and it's not back. So I didn't know everybody what they wanted. And there was an adjustment in the fees. And we should, we have to. We need to make it. But just as long as everybody knows.
Yeah, that's it. We're all out of time. We're already in conversation. The important thing about that, me and the brothers, it clearly spelled out in the school district, it clearly said that we don't represent board, or we don't represent our members, we don't represent the faculty, we don't represent the students, we don't represent. But that's the important part. And I can definitely try to make clear in a lot of our previous discussions, what a lot better for students.
So if we wanted stuff at the administration office to look at, instead of how, how would we do that?
Well.
If we wanted to look at consolidating the services where Jimmy's going to be leaving, I know we have resources through a line. No. Just so it's not anyone that has to go here. All right. Okay. Because I know, yeah, with the bills, we don't want to get charged as I can, we got.
So there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah. It's up to you as the board, you're going about it. You decide how the contract is working on the, that's all.
Okay. Yeah.
I've been saying that for a while. I decided better put it right.
Yeah.
I've been saying that for a while. I decided better put it right.
Well, thanks for listening. I'm just curious about this. I don't know.
Oh, my God. I worked with a student here. Okay. Oh, my God. What happened?
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
I don't think that's great for you. I would say he's. That's good. Detroit.
So it doesn't like, like, come out there.
On your. We always have to do that. As I say, that's a lot. So basically, that's the issue. We want to invite you. So what?
Yeah.
So there's a public comment. So.
Yes, we have to do it. If to do it is. It'll be such a. It's already.
I don't have. Yeah, it's good. Right? It's covered in. Um, you're certain, we, we're certain. Sure. I was asking if that's, if that's going. There were.
Yeah.
So there's a brief summary that we, uh, don't remember. It's our job. For the meeting.
Yeah, sure.
I got it. Barely got it.
We can bet Sky died many times soon, right?
Not until next year. I promised my kids I'd double, double thin die before I went to get her.
You can't. Now, that's maybe.
Yeah.
It's not just us. I went up to.
Yeah. And I called. They have it out already. Do I have it?
You need to hand up.
Yeah, we're getting it. All right.
Watch. This one.
Too long. Yep. More.
But not to even. Okay. We're ready to open when you give me the stuff. That was awesome. All right. Okay. Good evening. Calling me. Calling the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, needing to order. Um, pledge to allegiance and nominate, uh, Trustee Thompson. Let's. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and restless. Do you have some? We'll call.
Turn them on.
Pretty well. This one doesn't work. Okay, that's high. That's all right. We'll figure it out. First. Mr. Green, you are up. Oh, I apologize. We'll call. Go ahead. Crystal Bieber?
Here.
Rebecca Shambles? Here. Mark Holcomb?
Here.
Cindy Holder?
Here.
Deborah Ott?
Here.
Boya Thompson?
Here.
Beth Scott is absent with notice. We have corn.
Hello. This is Vivian?
Yo.
This is good, yeah. Thank you. Good, good to see everybody. Hello, hello. Um, my name's Rod Green. You remember me? Um, so what we put together today, um, is the idea of operating procedures and ethics for the board. And I know, you know, we spent some time in the spring talking about various protocols and how can we get along better and how do we work better together? So this is kind of a little bit of a formalized approach to this. And so what I'd like to do is just kind of go over it with you and then, and then we make adjustments. Now, the first two pages could be approved by the board. As you might notice there at the bottom. Um, and then the rest of it is more of just guidelines for how things kind of work around here. So I don't know if we'll get through all fifteen pages or whatever it is, but I certainly wanted to give you a shot at talking through some of these things. Are you ready? Ready to go? Okay. So the idea of these first two pages is, um, it's kind of a code of conduct. So as you can see in that first paragraph, as members of the Board of Education, we realize that to be the most effective advocates for children, we must function as a team and at all times treat each other and the people we serve with the utmost courtesy, dignity, respect, and professionalism. Now, this is just an opener. Should we, for whatever reason, fail to follow these guidelines, we ask that our fellow board members call it to our attention. Should that occur, we pledge to accept the feedback without anger or retribution, renew our efforts to follow this code of conduct. We shall promote the best interests of the school district as a whole, and to that end, we will adhere to the following educational and ethical standards. So I don't know. What do you think about the opening paragraph? Is that, is that okay? I mean, that's, this is, you might even have this in your policies already. I didn't, I didn't do a search, Angela. I don't know if you did. But some boards have adopted these types of procedures in their past, you know, and and so now, but certainly if you have it, this is something that could be adopted. You with me? Okay. So first one. I will bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedures, upholding and enforcing all laws, administrative rules and regulations, court orders pertaining to school district policies and procedures. So that's our legal one. You know, basically, you're saying as a board member, you're going to follow the rules, you're going to follow the regulations. If there's a court order, you're going to adhere to it. So the kinds of things that this might include, it could even be like closed session. When you go into closed session, one of your rules is to keep it confidential, you know? So you're saying, hey, I'm going to do that. Now, later on, it says that again, but you're saying you're going to follow these kinds of things. Okay.
I hate to start so soon, but.
Go ahead.
They did send you something.
Hit me.
That, um, I had asked Mr. Urban to send to us. Um, Mr. Montone was here last time, and I know there was discussion about pulling into closed session with the person.
Yes. Do you want Mr. Urban to speak to it? Closed session. Joe, come on up. Take over.
You can do it quickly. I didn't mean to start with number one, but they did send it to you. Okay.
So good. Take out. There you go. Um, you got to take that. So, yeah, so the question today was closed sessions. Um, and when there's a closed session, if we have a live meeting and we have somebody that's absent from the live meeting that's going to tune into the closed session remotely. Now, it, it, so now that we're in the age of Zoom and Zoom bombing and Google and Google intercepting and ransomware and all of this other good stuff, we've noticed that our communications are a heck of a lot less secure when we broadcast over the internet. It's one thing to broadcast and doing now, our meeting on over the internet right now, if it gets hacked, that's great, you know? It can be broadcast anywhere. It's a public meeting. It's the business of the school board. It's another thing entirely to conduct a confidential proceeding in closed session and run the risk of being hacked. It's another thing entirely to code, to conduct a confidential proceeding in closed session and run the risk that somebody outside may inadvertently, if a window's open or whatever, may inadvertently hear a part of the proceedings, things along those lines. So what I did was I took your policy, I think it was one sixty-seven, and I sent you a red line draft distributed to the board. Now, usually, as I understand it, when you do policies, you do a first reading, a second reading, and then adoption. So this is not something that's on the plate for tonight. This is something that, as Mr. Green, I think, is going to talk about as he goes through this process. Um, it's something that's up for due consideration, deliberation of the board through its normal processes. But the idea being that, you know, you have to be present in order to go into closed session. Um, that takes away the risk of the technology getting away from you, the closed session being abused by technology or mistakes, things along those lines. Now, if there's an accommodation that needs to be made, the policy allows for accommodations to be made on a case-by-case basis. Um, and we would follow the ADA as it relates to, you know, the request for an accommodation and whether an accommodation can be, um, can be, uh, created to accommodate the absence in those circumstances. But it's very difficult sitting here to talk about hypotheticals and what wouldn't be an appropriate or reasonable accommodation. The fact is that the default setting is if we're reading live, absent some extraordinary circumstance like need for an accommodation, that we're going to have people present in order to participate so that we minimize the risk that our meeting will be intercepted, hacked, or taken away from us. That's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, yeah, so you have to be present in closed session. That's, that's the normal procedure, you know? Back in the day, uh, we never even had this discussion at all. But the, the thing that I've heard the last few months as I've been doing this work is, um, when someone is, is not present and if they want to participate in closed session, as Joe said, you don't know if they're alone, you don't know if they're, you know, keeping it confidential. It's all because they're not here, you know? You need to be here. So, yeah.
I just had a question. I don't know, past, we've all gone into closed session over Zoom, um, when things were shut down and even when we were doing, um, teacher contracts, we've been there with partial in and out. Um, so I'm not sure.
So I think, yeah, I think.
Somebody thought on a medical, would we have to accommodate that with the new orders that are out? I believe it expires in, in December, if I'm not mistaken, unless they.
My understanding is not for closed session, but when the meeting's live, like Joe was saying, when the meeting's live, then people have to be present to be in closed session. You don't have the option of going on Zoom. And even under the rules with the medical, that's just for the, uh, normal board meetings, not closed session.
That's one, one clarification.
Sure.
Okay. All right. So, um, all right. So the next one is about discrimination. So I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, disability, or social standing. All decisions will place the needs of children first. Uh, yes, Rebecca.
I'm sorry. I just had a quick question. So since we did go into closed session with, um, partial in-person and partial via Zoom recently, the past couple of months, would that, would we have violated something since you're saying?
No, I, I think what Joe was talking about is, is making sure your policy is clear on how it's going to proceed. So in the past, it was not even a question. Nobody even talked about it. So now you need to update your policy to accommodate that.
So now we're going to change the policy. So if you're on Zoom, you can't participate in closed session?
I believe that would be the case, yes. Because it wasn't mentioned in the past. Okay. Any issues with the discrimination one? That's pretty self- Okay, so recognizing, the third one is recognize the board makes decisions as a whole, as a body corporate, not making personal promises or taking private action that may compromise the rule and integrity of the board. All board actions take place in an official board meeting. Now, this is, this is true under the law, and I probably mentioned this in our trainings before. It's, it's the board actions that are what's recorded in the minutes, you know? So, so the issue in my mind with this one is understanding that you guys are working as a board. And so, yes, you have some issues between each other and you have some conflicts. And so then you vote, and if it is four to three, the four are the majority, and that's the decision of the board. And I just was dealing with a situation in the car here on the phone, trying to work with the board, and basically it's a four to three situation. And so we're trying to work our way through it, and I was saying, hey, I'd like to have more. I'd like to have more of a consensus. But if, if it comes down to it, you guys are a seven-member board, you have to vote. And if it's four to three, then hopefully the three will support the board because that's the majority. So that's kind of the idea of this one. Just recognizing that you as an individual, Mark and Rebecca and Deb, you don't have any power to say, hey, this is what I want to have happen. Okay, the fourth one is trying to focus board actions on policymaking, goal setting, planning, evaluation as outlined in board policy and state law. So this is, is kind of the idea we talked about a few months ago, which was, you know, the day-to-day inner workings of administration and students and teachers is the administration's job. The board is bigger picture and trying to focus on policies and governance. And so that's kind of the one on that one. Now, obviously, it's more than just policymaking, goal setting. There's other things that the board has to focus on as things come forward. Let's say like this bond issue that's coming forward. You guys worked on that. That's a big thing. You decided, and now it's going on. You know, so that, that might have been a goal or whatever. Questions on that one? That's, that's kind of the, the normal tech on that. The next one is about supporting best qualified personnel available after due consideration of the superintendent. Recommendation superintendent. "I will support regular and impartial evaluation systems of the staff by the superintendent." So again, this idea is that as the board, you're holding the superintendent accountable to, you know, recommend staff, to do process, to hire staff, and then also, once the staff are hired, to do process to evaluate staff. And so your questions in this regard would be things like, you know, what, what was the process for this recommendation? You know, let's say three, three teachers are on the list. And so then, Angel, you would say, okay, so we, we did the, we did the posting. We did the, we did the interviews. I had a committee. We had them teach a lesson, you know, and then we ended up with these three. I mean, that's, that's the process question. So your concern would be more about, is the process being followed? That's what we want. And then, and then for evaluation, you're not going to really ask to see, oh, I'd like to see so-and-so's evaluation. That's not appropriate. What would be appropriate is, could we have a summary on all the evaluations last year? You know, so we got 150 teachers. Yeah, I can put together a summary for you. I can tell you how, how the, you know, that type of, that type of bigger picture question. Does that make sense? So we're trying to get the board to focus on, how do you oversee the work of the superintendent? So it's not all the nitpicky little things like, hey, I think that the football coach or the basketball coach should have done this or whatever. That's not really it. It's more of the system of hiring coaches or the system of dealing with evaluation. Okay, stop me if I'm going, if you need to. Okay, the next one is the same kind of thing. It's the, it's the role of the board is to govern and oversee the management of the district. The authority is delegated to the superintendent for the day-to-day operations. So this is where you get into these gray areas. Well, that feels to me like that should be, you know, the board's job. And then superintendent's saying like, oh, this is like, this is, this is my job. This is day-to-day. This is what's happening, you know? And so what we really want to try to do is get that feel of, you know, is this a daily occurrence? If, if you need an answer, one of the, one of the rules of thumb is if you need an answer within a few days on a question, that question is probably not board stuff. Because board stuff is bigger, longer. Does that make sense? You need an answer, hey, I need to know this by tomorrow. How is that a board thing? It's got to be a day-to-day thing. Does that make sense? So this is how I want you to think, is think about that bigger picture, you know? And let him do his job on the day-to-day.
And can I just interrupt quickly?
Please.
I know we had decided that he was essentially going to answer us on Sundays. I know we were kind of-
Like questions?
-got away from that. But we are trying to get back to that answering in his weekly update. Not so anybody feels that they're not getting responded to.
Yeah, no, I think that's good, that's good. But I would just say, even weekly updates are more about administrative matters, which are his job, you know? So some superintendents that I run into, they're like, yeah, I don't, I don't really update the su, the board only every other week or only at board meetings. Because why? Because all the stuff that's in the update is basically administrative stuff. You know, so, so, yeah, it's great. I think it's good. I'm not saying don't do it. I'm saying, I'm saying that it's almost like a courtesy for the superintendent to put all of this detail in. And I don't know how much you're doing or whatever. But when you, it's all about the day-to-day stuff. It's all about your job. And so why does the board need to know that is a little bit of a question? Well, some board members would say, well, I need to know that because I need to do my job. I need to know that you're doing your job. Okay, all right. I, I don't disagree with that. It's helpful to know that you're doing your job. But is it really, is that really the truth? Or sometimes it's curiosity. Board members just want to know what all is going on. Sometimes it's, it's political. Board members feel like, hey, I need to know so I can tell my constituents I know. You know, and honestly, your job is really oversight. So, so I do, I do think it's a good idea to have a procedure for updating the board. Good. But, but when you're, if you're getting dozens of questions all the time about things, I would question if it's really the board's role with all of that detail, if that makes sense. So I, I don't want you to not answer questions. I think we decided when we were working before that it's good for you to answer questions and have a regular procedure for doing that. But the board members need to realize that, you know, hey, he's got a day-to-day job he's doing. And when he has to take away from that to answer questions, that sometimes can be detrimental to the overall operation. Okay. Okay, so I will respect confidential information that's privileged under law, including closed sessions. So we all know closed sessions are, are really supposed to be confidential. And there's a, there was an attorney general decision on that that basically said, if you're not keeping it confidential, you're really violating the Open Meetings Act. So we all are aware of that. But there's other things that you get in your, in your, in your updates and things that aren't necessarily said to be confidential, but it's not necessarily a good idea to tell everybody. So what I would say to board members is that there's a trust that goes on between superintendent and the board, and you need to be careful with telling everybody everything you know. I used to tell my kids this, you know? You don't have to tell everything you know all the time. You know, it's just not always that great of an idea. So sometimes you know things and then you keep it to yourself, and I think that's a good, a good process. That's not to say I don't think you should be transparent. And I think the board, the board's actions. So when I talk about the board being transparent, in my mind, I am talking about the board as a board, not board members, if that makes sense. So as a board, you have the obligation to inform the community things that are happening. And some of that's going to come through Angel and how you work together in terms of your action items and things like that. But as a board member, you're just one person. You're not supposed to divulge everything that you know about every little thing, about things. That's not what it means to be transparent. Does that make sense? All right. "To the extent possible," this is number eight. "I will attend regularly scheduled and especially set board meetings, arrive on time, and inform myself of the issues to be considered." So, hey, that's a good one. All of us try to do that. You guys were all on time tonight. Good job. Did you, yeah? Good job. Okay. Now, on page two. "I will assist in making policy decisions only after full discussion at a publicly held board meeting and render my decision or all decisions based on available facts. I will not surrender judgment to individuals or special groups." So this is what I was just dealing with on the phone, you guys. The board members actually asked me, should we, should we just talk to the stakeholders that are here and ask them what they think? My answer was, look, you're the one that's on the board. You're, you're the board. It's not somebody else's decision. This is your decision. Now, they were, they're trying to decide between two candidates for superintendent job. That's what they were talking about. And they had already gotten the stakeholder input through the process. So they've gotten that, and they were just kind of on the fence, like going all over the place. So what's, should you really surrender your judgment to the, no, you should not. You guys are the ones that are elected. You guys are the ones that are on the board. You should take the input, listen to the facts, listen to the data, listen to whatever you want to listen to, listen to your colleagues, and then, and then you decide based on that information. And, and so that's, that's the point of that one. Now, I will say, notice this says full discussion at publicly held board meetings. So we are not suggesting that you have impromptu meetings out in the parking lot or other places. And I know you're really good about that, trying to stay on task. When you leave here, you're not talking about board business. You're, you know, especially to your colleagues. You're, you're doing that here at board meetings. Any questions so far? Are you enjoying this? Is this great? This is pure, pure gold, right? Okay. I know I'm having a good time. Angel, you having a good time?
Yes.
Okay. "I will refrain from using my board position for personal or partisan gain." All right, so I know there's not too much money out there, but, you know, the idea of it. You're on the board to serve the district, to serve the board. You're not on the board for your own personal stuff. Number 11. "I will disagree in an agreeable manner. I will not hold grudges or question other board members' ethics or motives to their vote or their views on issues." So this is a norm. This is a, you know, and I personally think taking the high road, and I said this to you guys in one of our workshops. Take the high road. Somebody says something, stop yourself, and then, and then take the high road. And I just think that that's the best approach. And, and that whole idea of being agreeable, even if you do disagree, I just think it's, it's important. And I know you guys don't agree on, on some things. And I think you should be, I think all the board members should be able to offer their perspective and their reasoning, and you hear from each one, and then you hold a vote, and then you move on. And, and that's my, that's my read on it. And I don't like this idea of holding grudges. I think this is the, one of the things that really hurts us as a team is that we can't get past certain things that happened in the past. And I know I talked to you about that before. I don't know that we made a lot of progress on some of that. But I personally think that trying to put the past in the past is the best way to govern. And you try to keep working on the things that come before you. So that's, that's my theory. And yes, I did use to be a preacher. No, I did not. Okay. Do I sound like a preacher? I could give you a little bit more fire and brimstone, but I'm just going to play it cool.
Next time. Right on. Next time.
Next time, right, next time. All right, so what about the next one? "I will be firm, fair, just, and impartial in all decisions and actions. I will not engage in texting regarding board issues during board meetings." So this one kind of got in there during our Zoom days when what we were doing, people were on Zoom, but then they were texting each other. You know, that's not a good idea. So obviously here, it's a little more obvious. If you pull up your phone, you start texting. But when you were on Zoom, it was a little easier. But this is a good rule. Don't be texting during board meetings and try to refrain from, from that type of activity. Number 13. This is one I kind of mentioned already, but respecting the majority decision as the decision of the board. And honestly, you guys, you're one board member on a seven-member board. It's the board that counts. It's the board actions that count. And so when the board has voted, you move on. And you, and in my mind, you support the decision of the board. Now, I'm not saying that you have to say anything like, oh, yeah, I, I voted for that when you really didn't. And I'm not saying you ever should vote other than your conscience. I think you should vote the way you feel. But then, once the vote is done, if the media was here or somebody was here and they asked you, I would say, yes, I voted no on that, but the board has spoken, and now we're moving forward. You know, and it's just that simple. It's just like, there's no, in my mind, there's no point in delaboring the fact that you voted no and you didn't get your way and so on and so forth. It's just like, it doesn't make any sense. So I would support the decision of the board. That's my, that's my theory. The next one is, "I encourage the free expression of opinion by all board members. I will make good faith effort to understand and accommodate the views of others." So this is you as a board member saying that you will basically encourage other board members to offer their opinions. And you'll listen, and you'll, you'll try to understand what they're saying, and then you're going to make your own opinion and your own decision. But it's, it's not, it's not saying that you're going to, when it says accommodate the view of others, that doesn't mean you're going to have to agree with them. It just means that you need to listen to them and, and, and understand what they're saying. Number 15 is, "I will use appropriate channels to refer and place the superintendent." So obviously, you are board members, and you can, you can call the superintendent or let him know at any time. But the best, the best tactic on this, as we talked about before, is that you refer the person to the appropriate chain of command. So somebody comes to you with a question about, you know, something in the classroom. I mean, basically, you're saying, hey, have you talked to the teacher? You know, oh, you've talked to the teacher? Well, you should give the principal a call. And that's the best avenue. And you kind of encourage people, you redirect that concern to the appropriate chain of command. Of course, number 16 follows up in saying, "I will communicate public concerns to fellow board members or the superintendent at an appropriate time." So this is something where you've heard something and you feel like everyone else needs to know. So you're not the only one that knows something. You kind of let people know if there's a concern out there. Number 17. "I will be present and fully engaged in board discussions, not engage in sidebars or excessive texting during board meetings." That's, I think, obvious. Number 18 is adopting the no surprises rule. Number 18 is adopting the no surprises rule. If there's an item that needs to be discussed, superintendent, board president, and other members will know before the day of the meeting. So this is where you're bringing something up right at the meeting. So everybody's surprised. Superintendent's surprised, other board members are surprised. And I'm saying that's not a good idea. You need to have stuff on the agenda for the meeting. That's, then that's what you follow. So that's, that's the rule on that. Now, adopt, I'm sorry, for, for the board president, I will make sure that persons addressing the board follow established policy guidelines and not allow inappropriate communication to be directed toward the board or to the superintendent during the board meeting. So this is you, Cindy, trying to manage stuff, you know?
And I got a little bit more clarification and I'm going to continue to work on streamlining, um, the input.
Good. Yeah, and, um, so you're, you're trying to make sure people follow the rules. And, you know, I was here a couple of months ago and it was a little, uh, you know, concerning. But at least during the first part of the meeting, you know, that, that went pretty well. Where people came up, they, they did their thing, you handled it fine. But certainly as board president, you do have the right to say, hey, that's inappropriate or, you know, whatever. Um, and then also with board members, you're assuring that board members are given an opportunity to reflect their views and, and you try to work toward building consensus. So if you have a contentious issue, you know, you're saying, okay Gloria, you know, what do you think? Crystal, what do you think? Rebecca? You're trying to get the voices in the room and make sure everybody has a chance to participate before the vote. So your, your job is trying to do that, uh, Cindy, as, as you know. Okay, questions on this? Yes?
I just have one. Um, and it had to do more about the bond. Someone had asked me and I didn't know the answer to it. Um, and I'll be the first to say when this bond came up, I was, not the first to work with this, but the decision was to go forward. I mean, doing my part to move it forward. Um, is there any kind of dereliction in duty if we all arms the board again?
You know, I would, I would kind of say, no, there's no real dereliction of duty. I don't think that's really a legal thing. I mean, we got a lawyer here to give the answer to, but...
And maybe that's not even the right term, but that's what this is.
Yeah, I, no, I don't think so. I mean, I, I think certainly people should support, the board should be supporting the initiatives of the district. I do think that. But, um, but as individuals, you know, again, you're an individual, so you have the right to your own opinions and so on and so forth. So it's a little hard to say, hey, you're not doing your job. I, I don't know. Did you want to weigh in on that at all?
Yeah, uh, we got to weigh in on something.
He's gonna say no.
Um, you know, I, this concept of a dereliction of duty, I wanted to speak to another AG opinion as well that goes with it. Um, there's actually also an attorney general's opinion that says that you, you actually as a board, you have to do your job and vote your conscience one way or the other. And you can't delegate that job to the public or to a faction of the public. I think you talked about that in one of your point trips.
Yeah.
Um, you can't delegate that duty to a faction of the public. You can't put to a plebiscite or a vote, even an informal one, stuff that as a board we should be, we should be taking conscience of. But as to dereliction of duties and not supporting a bond, I stand with Rod on this one. I think the, the fact of the matter is that, yeah, we want to support the well thought out intentions of the school district. And those are going to be brought up to you from the administration. But you're seven people and you're elected to the board not because you're, um, you know, you're rocket scientists, accountants, lawyers, doctors, brain surgeons, neurosurgeons. You're elected to the board because you're prudent people that understand the community. You live in the community. You may have any and all of those jobs, don't get me wrong. But the point is you're prudent people who understand the community. And as prudent people who understand the community, you're encouraged to vote your conscience. That's why they put these things to a vote. That's why the state wants to see that, especially with a pre-qualified bond or a, a, a school bond loan from qualified bond. They want to see that the board has voted on the bond and supports the project. So, and as, as also as a taxing unit, it's going to be taxing the residents to pay for it. You have to vote your conscience on these things. So I stand with Rod on the one point saying that you want to support the well-intentioned, um, and well thought out initiatives of the school district. And I would take that a step further and say, it is the very reason you are on the board as prudent people to vote your conscience on these issues. And your conscience may support it. Your conscience may not support it. But you'll be held to account at the next election if the people that you're supporting don't understand your vote and why you took that vote and why you took that reason. So I absolutely do not believe at all that it's a dereliction of duty if you vote your conscience on any issue, whether it's the bond or if you want.
And don't go anywhere. I'll ask one more question and then, um, city council, yeah, some internet rules. Um, Mr. Irvin, you can answer, or maybe first.
Sure.
Um, as far as personal accounts and interaction of school business and stuff. If, if we're going to be doing new, a new set of guidelines, I'm wondering if that's something that's critical at this point to look into?
So what you're saying is the city council adopted a set of rules that probably restricts council members from conducting city business on their personal email accounts.
Or, or if they do, they have to be open. No one can be blocked.
Yeah, so...
Social media.
Oh, social media. So in social media, you have some choices. And, and I can talk for an hour on this, I promise you.
Okay, but we don't want to do that.
Um, for social media, you have some choices. You can create what's called a limited open forum where you accept comments. If you accept one comment, you gotta accept every comment. You can create a closed forum where all that goes out is the content from the school district and you accept no comments. Um, and, you know, those are really your two main choices. But you can't pick at you the comments that you accept.
So on your personal Facebook account?
On your personal Facebook page, that's completely different. Social media and the law have not completely caught up with each other yet. I think on your own personal Facebook page, or you're, as long as it's your personal page. And you don't open that bio where it says, you know, where you put your little Facebook biography and it says, you know, um, you know, I love my neighbors and all this other good stuff, you know? It's very good. Most of the professionals I work with will say it's their personal page or personal views. If it's your personal page, you all have First Amendment rights to express your opinions, your citizens and board members. It's when you try to conflate the two rules and the two duties that you get in trouble. If it's your own personal page and you're not easy to conduct school business and it's clearly marked as your own personal views, you still have a First Amendment right to do that. Now, there are campaign finance issues you gotta worry about and we can talk about that in more detail if we put some guidelines together. But as a general rule, school district, if you, school district and school district run accounts. If you accept one comment, you have to accept all. Although you do have the option to close it to all comments, but then you can accept no comments. And then secondly, if it's your own page, you should clearly mark it as such and feel free to express your views.
Okay, so you can, you can block people?
The school district?
On your personal account?
Yeah, on your personal account. It's your personal account.
Okay.
But it's got, it, it, you, you really want to make sure. I, I would, before I did that, I would want to, I would want to look at it and be sure that it's a personal account, it's not a district account. Yes?
I think, I think what happened there is when people were telling me that they had a group.
Oh, is that a difference?
They would take the people off and just treat them as a group.
Okay.
Yeah, once you have school district personnel moderating a group, it takes it into a totally different place. If it's your own page, groups are different than your own page now, okay? So if it's your own Facebook page, that's one thing. If it's a group that you're moderating now, you've really got some time to prove a negative. You actually have to prove that you're adminning this group on your own time, on your own, you know, on your own dime, with your own, you know, relevance and all that other good stuff. That gets very easy to confuse.
So not at this time? I just, I just didn't want to miss something and it was the point that needed to be taken care of.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, so thoughts on these first two pages? I mean, this is like a code of conduct and ethics. I mean, it's not too, uh, out there, but what do you think? Deb, what are you thinking? You like it?
Yep.
Crystal, what do you think? Anything strike you?
I mean, in theory, I think it's great. It doesn't do this to...
Impracticality?
Yeah.
I know.
In a perfect world, it's all...
Yeah, it seems like it's good, good to follow, but sometimes in the heat of the moment, it doesn't, it doesn't work. Mark, anything? Think it's okay?
Yeah, I think it's great.
So I mean, if you wanted to, this is something you could adopt as a, as a policy or a bylaw. It's, it's something that, what I would do is revisit it every year. Like in January, when you do your organizational meeting, so you, you have this on there. It's one of your things. Hey, let's review this, kind of look it over. Everybody says, yep, sounds good. Let's keep moving.
It's not the specific thing, I think, this is more detail.
This is more detail?
Definitely.
Is this better? Let's just say?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Untouched. No, um, sometimes they are out there, you know, people have them. And I think they, they kind of morph along, like we added texting and different things, you know? But yeah, you can compare what you've already got in this. Make sure you got it covered and then, and then put it out on the board agenda. Okay, so the next part is more like, how do we operate around here? And in terms of doing things like agendas and things like that. So some of this stuff might be in your bylaws as well. So you'd have to compare, you know, and I don't know if, if we did any of that. But generally, uh, this first one is about the agenda gets created by the collaboratively by superintendent, board president is presented to the board and I put no later than Thursday prior to Monday. Is that accurate?
Yes, sometimes we, they pick it up Thursday morning, sometimes we finish it.
Okay. Um, the, um, I'm sorry, I'm distracted with this other board I'm dealing with. So I'm just trying to make sure they're not, uh, having a major issue. Um, okay, so, um, Thursday prior to Monday. Alright, perfect. So that's, that's how we do it. So when you say collaboratively between the board president and superintendent, I mean, generally the superintendent is putting together the agenda along with the administrative assistant. Board president is kind of reviewing, making sure, and then, you know, that's kind of how it goes. Is that how it goes?
Yeah. Cindy can operate the whole and I talk.
Okay, alright. Now, the next thing is board members must request it writing or verbally to superintendent, board president, any item they desire to have placed on the agenda. An item will be placed on the agenda at discretion of superintendent, board president. So that's, that's the rule. Now, we can talk to legal here, um, but generally, that's how it works. Is the board president controls the agenda with the superintendent. So, you know...
Our current bylaws say that, you know, any two members can call the meeting. But it is still mine and the superintendent's job.
To do the agenda.
To do the agenda.
Yeah. So, and so that's, that is usually the issue and that's usually how it goes. So obviously, in case you're not aware, that, you know, four board members always control the board president. So if you say, hey, this is what the agenda is, then the, the people want to change the agenda, if there's four votes to do that, you can do it. And I'm not suggesting that you do that. I don't think that's good practice because then that's a surprise to people. Um, but I, I do know that in terms of how boards work, the president is always subject to the full board. Yes, ma'am?
Um, I have a question. How, what do you think is a, like decent timeframe? If, say I wanted to add something to the agenda before I emailed the two of them? Like, when did they...
I would say...
Obviously not like two minutes before I...
Yeah, I would say, uh, a few days. I mean, usually four or five days is good for something like, hey, this has been going on. I think we should talk about this. Um, I will say, alright, so you guys know I was superintendent for 24 years. Um, only had this happen once in my whole career where somebody wanted something on the agenda that the board president and I hadn't really thought of. And, and what they did, they didn't email us. They did it at the meeting. And so he told me a couple of minutes before the meeting, hey, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask to have this added to the agenda. I chose to take the high road. And I said, fine. You know, make a motion and, and somebody will support it and then we'll vote. I'm not gonna fight adding it to the agenda. But when the, the item was, you know, that they wanted to rescind the $2 million of cuts that we had made the previous week. That was what he wanted, he wanted in his motion, he wanted that added to the agenda. So when it got to the point on the agenda, then I said, I do not think this is a good idea. I don't think we should rescind the cuts. We have a $3 million deficit. This is just $2 million worth of cuts, blah, blah, blah. And so then eventually the board president called for a vote and the two members that wanted it added to the agenda voted yes to rescind the cuts, but the five members voted no. So to me, that was the way it should work, even though I didn't appreciate being ambushed at the meeting. I would think it would have been better to email me, but the answer would have been no. I mean, the answer would have been, no, we're not gonna put that on the agenda. So that was really the only way that he felt like he could get on the agenda. That's the only time in 24 years that that ever happened to me. So I don't think it's a common occurrence to add stuff to the agenda to, you know? Now, obviously, there's something going on and you feel like something should be added to the agenda. Hopefully Cindy's gonna be like, hey, that's a good idea. Let me talk to Angel and we'll, we'll look at it. You know, I mean, it's theoretically, that's possible. But the board agenda is generally set by the board business. It's not political. Yes?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I did call this holder, um, maybe a week or two ago about this, something that I thought we should have a board discussion on. So I'll just email, you know, next week or something to see if we can get it over.
Yeah, alright. I mean, theoretically Cindy, you're trying to work with your people. And you're, you're listening and if, you know, and you talk to Angel, hey. Now, some things are a little tricky. I mean, there's some things that I don't think should be on the agenda for just very, in my mind, obvious reasons. It's not appropriate. We don't have the information. It's not the right timing. There's lots of reasons. Um, but, and then we trust the leadership that they've got that in mind, thinking about what is the timing of this? How does this work? Um, okay. So then consent agenda, this next item, do you guys use a consent agenda?
It's in the bylaws, but we haven't...
You haven't really used it?
It kind of is. I mean, the standard of business.
Yeah, so the consent agenda is for routine items. So like the approval of the minutes, the approval of the bills. I mean, some, and so in some places, the approval of the bills is not routine. And so that's not on the consent agenda. But for me, it was always, you know, hiring people, uh, any resolutions like MHSAA or something like that and, you know, the minutes and just that normal stuff that was just routine. Um, but if anybody, uh, wanted to take it off the agenda, that's fine. And they just say, hey, take C off, and then C is off. So if you want to do it, do that. Now, this next one is agendas will be posted 24 hours before the meeting. So, so this is different. Notice the board. So here's the way I think, and I don't know if I said this to you back in the spring, um, is the, the board gets the agenda first. Then it's posted on the web. And so to my way of thinking, the board always sees it first, at least a day in advance. So that's why that's on there compared to what was on earlier. Does that make sense? We don't want board members getting caught off guard with what's on the agenda, having community members come up to them and they haven't read their email yet and they saw it already on the web. Okay, board preparation for meetings. So, um, you know, come to meetings, prepared to discuss, take action, study the material in the packet, request for additional information, you know? So certainly requests for information about agenda items should be, it's great to do it in, in advance of the meeting. I know we've talked about that before. It helps Angel, helps him understand what's going through people's minds and helps him be more prepared for the board meeting. So we would like to have that happen if that's possible. Comments on that so far? Does all seem routine? Anytime four members are gathered together to discuss school business, it is a meeting. In addition to the following procedures, board members shall adhere to the code of conduct. So as you look forward here, okay, wow, we got a lot of things here. So this is like similar to the code of conduct, but it's also a little more... So this is like similar to the code of conduct, but it's also a little more, you know, like, hey, be cordial when disagreeing, treat each other respectfully, say what needs to be said briefly, direct your comments slowly to the business under deliberation, address each other in a courteous manner, only speak after acknowledgement from the board president, so is, how does that go? Does that work pretty good? It seemed like I saw some hands being raised and stuff. So that's very helpful for running a good meeting. Support hearing the voice of all board members on the agenda item, refrain from one person dominating the conversation, refrain from critical or content sending comments, focus on the issue, not on the people. So this is one of the things I wanted to mention, uh, earlier to you guys, and I might have back in the spring. But sometimes it feels like the personalities are dominating, and what we need to talk about is the issue, and, and not, not being focused on the person. And sometimes we take it personally. So one of the things that we learn in, in these roles is, don't take it personal. Try to understand, this is what they feel about the issue, it's not about me, you know. And, um, so that's, that's important. Courteously accept other viewpoints, um, seek support when possible, and reasonable compromises or consensus when there are differences. Make decisions in context of what's best for the, all of the students. Avoid immediate decisions, um, in possible short-term solutions when the issue calls for a longer-term solution. Be willing to publicly apologize if needed. Attempt to always have dialogue rather than simple yes or no. As a courtesy to others, electronic devices are set in non audible mode. Um, and avoid texting or the appearance of texting during the board meeting. So those are some protocols, again, similar to what we talked about before. I thought they were good, so I left them in there. Um, okay. Persons addressing the board. So this one is about public participation, and, um... So this one says, audience members wishing to comment on agenda items would be right in opportunity prior. At other times, the board, audience shall not enter discussion or debate unless being considered or less recognized. So generally, I would say, and I don't know for sure if you're having your public comment at the beginning, but that's kind of what this says, is you're having your public comment before you take these actions. And then when you're in, actually in the action item, you're not allowing audience to participate. This is the board on that, right? And so you're doing that. So that one sounds like you're doing it. Um, the board may address an item on the agenda or non-agenda by completing a note card located... Now, I don't know, are you using note cards, this might be new. Are you using note cards?
Yeah.
Alright. There you go, so you're doing that, so that's a good one. And I didn't, I put in three minutes, I don't know, do you do three minutes?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Look at that, it's like I'm, uh, clairvoyant. Um, board presidents shall have the authority to terminate remarks if they're frivolous, repetitive, or harassing. So this is where Cindy, and I'm not suggesting that you get into this a lot, but if somebody really is being inappropriate up here, you do have the right to say, boom, 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 I'm sorry, that's inappropriate, you need, you need to stop using those terms, or whatever. Um, now, I would say, allow them to continue to speak, but if they continue in that fashion, you can, you can say, that's it, you're off, or you could recess the board. Now, I know you've had a couple of issues with this, it's always tricky to stop someone from speaking. So I would rather have you correct them and ask them to refrain from harassing or, or naming individuals, uh, as, uh, in, in person, you know, naming an individual. Um, so that, that's how I think I would handle that. Alright, so board response. So you guys have heard me talk about this before, but the first statement there is, board members will listen to questions and comments and not respond at this time. And so I think you've probably given, I've given you this speech, but I'm gonna just say it again. If they're talking, if the person is talking about an agenda item, you're going to have a chance to discuss it when it's up on the agenda. If the person is talking about a non-agenda item, how could you possibly formulate a response between the seven of you as a board without hearing all of the information from both sides, without discussing it as a group, and then formulating a response? I mean, it's just impossible. So in my view, there's never a good time to speak off the cuff and try to answer stuff. Now, Angel, as a superintendent, might have ability to answer something, and so what I have told you guys before is, put your report, put his report after the board comment, I mean, after the public comment, and then if people have said stuff, then he might be able to respond to it in, in his remarks, if needed. I'm not saying, but it's for the board to do it, it's impossible, in my view. Um, and so that's where that second one says, you know, Cindy, you, you can say thank you, administration will get back to you, you know, and again, Angel, this is where I think you close the loop with the board. You tell them, by the end of the week, you say, yeah, I called that person, and I was able to resolve this. You know, and even the next board meeting, you can close the loop and say, that situation that happened last time, this is the result. I mean, it, you could, if they're, if the situation warrants it. Um, so here's my little speech here, right here in writing. Board members will not respond because, number one, items on the agenda will discuss as appropriate. Number two, items not on the agenda don't, don't, uh, allow for the proper discussion. And number three, the board members may request that the board president respond to the individual and write after reviewing the policy. So that's kind of like if, um, if there's something in regard to a board policy that you could actually research and get back, it might be you that would respond after the board meeting during the week. Generally, it's gonna be the superintendent. Comments so far? Okay, so the board members will not encourage or actively participate with negative comments on individual employees or students in public session. I think that's a good rule. Um, what about, uh, employee discipline or hearings? Um, the board will conduct the hearings in accordance with policy and law. The board will seek legal counsel if necessary. The board will not use a student's name in any discussion. Um, certainly, that's an open session, of course, in closed session, you, you might be able to have a student sitting right there and do something with the hearing. But in open session, you should not be using names. Um, and then, of course, in accordance to the law, it will be held in closed session if requested by the offending party, offended party. Okay, so in terms of motions, um, all discussions shall be directed to the business currently under deliberation. We said that earlier. The board president has the responsibility to keep the discussion in, uh, at the motion at hand in all discussions that don't apply to the business. And, uh, the board member shall ask for recognition. So I think you're doing all of those things, those are just good practical protocols for having motions. How about debating? So all board members shall vote on all items unless a conflict of interest applies. I told you that before, so you're generally not gonna abstain on things. You're voting on things unless you have a conflict of interest. Uh, all members may make motions, second motions, and enter debate. This includes the board president. In case of a tie, the action item fails, and, um, so that would be like, like tonight, you have six members here, if you voted on something tonight, it's three to three. Then we're saying in here that the board president can bring that back when the full board is present, if you felt that that was appropriate. In case, in case of less than unanimous vote, the board will support the majority decision and go forward as a matter of consensus. Majority of the board is, uh, needed to pass an action item. So you guys know this, I've told you this before, you always need four votes. You're a seven-member board. The only difference would be is if you ever had two board members vacate their seat before that particular moment, where you only had five board members with two seats vacant, then you could pass something with a three to two vote. But other than that, uh, you're always gonna have seven members, even six members, you would need four. Where that happens is like if two board members resign, and so then you're appointing the next board member, sometimes you could have that situation happen. Actually, it just happened the other day, I mean... Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if, this may be a stupid question, but let's say two of us are absent, they would, we would still need four votes in order to pass something?
Yes. Yeah, it's only if you see...
Not the majority of who's present?
No, no. It's not the majority of who's present, it's the majority of sitting members. And so the only way it ever works without four is if you actually vacate the seat. Now, when is a seat vacated? And, uh, and we have an attorney here, so I'll see if, uh, he agrees, you can just give me the thumbs up. But basically, there was a case here recently where, uh, somebody ruled, I think it was an attorney general, or somebody ruled that, once the email is sent, resigning, that's, that's the rule, they're, they're vacated. What do you say, Joe, you say, agree? Yeah, see, he agrees with me. I'm not a lawyer, but I did state it, and in the end, you guys heard that one before. Okay. Um, so, so yeah, so somebody sends an email, so this happened to me just recently. They send the email, the board gets it, but doesn't do anything. So basically, day one is the day after the email is sent, and you have 30 days to, to, uh, to fill that seat. So if you did have people resign, you would be, you would have vacant seats, and so then, in that case, that's how that goes. Okay. Where are we? 1.5? So closed sessions, um, you know, anybody asks you about closed session, you really just need to defer, and you just say, hey, you can talk to the superintendent if you want. I mean, but honestly, it's confidential. Nobody should be saying, yeah, this is what happened, hey, here's the scoop, you know, you should be really not doing that. Um, and sometimes people are interested in what happened in closed session. Partly because they don't know, maybe, you know, the board went into closed session, they didn't quite hear the reason, they're not sure what's going on, so they're curious. And it's tempting to just say, oh yeah, we just had an expulsion hearing. I just would not do that, I would not do that. I would just say, yeah, it's closed session, not supposed to talk about it, you know, and that's it. Now, in 1.6, um, you can have people in closed session that you want. So for example, if you had a hearing, you might have the kid's parents, and maybe they're bringing a lawyer. You know, maybe you've got your lawyer that you want to have in there. And you've got the high school principal. Or maybe you're talking about negotiations, and you want to have the business manager, you know, or maybe you've got a negotiator, that's all okay. It's all up to the board who comes into closed session. Um, now, election of officers. So, you know, basically, and I don't know how you guys, uh, how you guys did this last time, but you don't have to vote on nominations. So anybody can be nominated, anybody can withdraw, you know. So basically, how it goes, let's say Angel might call the meeting to order if, you know, because there's no president theoretically, technically, I don't, I don't mind if you do it, but sometimes superintendents do it, and you say, alright, you know, anybody want to be nominated for president? So everybody gets nominated, I don't care, doesn't matter. All the nominations are, are wide open. The key is, who's gonna be elected? So that's where you need a motion to elect. So you say, I wanna move that we're gonna elect, you know, Cindy Holder to be president. Somebody needs to support it, and then how many votes do you need? Four. That's how it goes. So what if she only gets three? Then, somebody else has to make a motion to elect, let's elect Deb to be president. I'll support that. How many votes do you need? Four. And so, so basically, you do this until you get four. Once you get four votes, then that person's the president, and then you do the next one. And, um, so, I mean, people get confused on this. Sometimes what they do is, and believe me, I've seen all of it, but, um... Sometimes people will take two nominations, and then they'll vote on both of them. Even though the first one got four votes, then they vote on the second one anyway, don't do that. Once they have four votes, that's it. But if they do only get three votes, then you need another motion. But again, it doesn't matter who's nominated. You don't even need to do nominations, you can just do the election, if that makes sense. Nominations are kind of a icebreaker opener to say, hey, we're doing the process, who wants to be president? Oh, Mark would, Crystal would, you know, whatever, I would, you know. So now, alright, so, so we got the idea of who wants to be president, now do I have a motion to elect somebody who's president? And so it doesn't even matter if somebody's first, you know, like, hey, I wanna make a motion first, they still gotta get four votes. Does that make sense? Alright. So then you do the same thing for the other officers. Usually, in this, in this thing, we wrote down one year, or until a successor is elected. Um, so that's where I was saying, like, sometimes the board president just opens that meeting and does that, hey, we gotta do board president, you could still run that. But sometimes people, when they're board president, they say, hey, you know, I'd like to just let someone else do that, and then, and then once I'm elected, I'll do it, you know, that kind of thing.
Temporary chair first.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Now, um... It does, it does, uh, say a slate of officers could be put, put to the vote, but I personally just do each office separately, and so you can see both things are said there. Um, vacancy shall be filled by a majority action of the board. So what if, if someone resigns, uh, their seat? You know, then what do you do? Well, first of all, you might, if they were an officer, you might want to have that officer elected. So let's say the treasurer resigned. And, um, so alright, we need a new treasurer, so you would run this. Hey, anybody want to do it? Need nominations, alright, I need a motion to elect somebody. You fill it, then you're looking for filling a trustee spot, right? Because you're doing the 30-day thing. So there's a little process to all of that.
So do you, would you have to fill the officer's position before you fill the position?
You don't have to fill it before, but you, sometimes that's what people do.
I mean, I think it's equal size.
Yeah, and I would say, I would say for president, uh, if the president resigned, you, you would probably fill it right away. But, um, sometimes people are like, yeah, that's not the top priority, the top priority is getting a new, uh, board member appointed, and then we'll worry about officers later. Now, one of the things that you may not know, and maybe you do know, and I probably mentioned it to you before, is you, you don't have any authority outside the board meeting. So even if you're an officer, so Gloria, you're the treasurer, right? So, I mean, you really don't have the authority to go into the business office and start, you know, pushing people around. I mean, I know you don't do that, but I'm just saying, like, sometimes it feels like, well, I'm the treasurer, I need to do this, it's like, not really... You see, she's doing it right now. So, um, so, but it's not to say...
You have given her, the delegated, those tasks to her.
Yes, and so, so sometimes the board president, or I mean, excuse me, the board might have some duties that they want the treasurer to do, and it should be a board decision. And, um, so that's, that's how that goes. Now, in terms of committees, do you guys have any committees, or you're kind of off the committees? So if you were gonna do committees, you, the board president generally is gonna be doing that, and, and then I put down some, some typical committees.
Oh, we have one right now, our KEL committee.
Okay.
Other than that, no.
So that's that. Um, communication with each other, so I don't know, if you guys want to take a break? Are you, you feeling like you want to take a little break? Deb, you want to keep going? Power through? Mark, power? Rebecca, you good, keep going? Alright, um, so communication. Don't deliberate on issues outside board, right, outside board meetings. Abide by the spirit and letter of the OMA, restricted to one-on-one communication. So this is the, remember the reply to all thing? Reply to all, how I told you, don't reply to all. You know, one-on-one is okay, but when you start involving a group, it starts to feel like it could be a violation. So, so that would be to be avoided. Um.
What about when people are blind copied? That, that's such a weird thing.
It's the same, it's really the same-
Then you don't know how many have gotten it.
Yeah, and that's true, you don't. And, and I think one thing is to trust that everyone's trying to uphold the O M A. But um, but if it's obvious reply to all, you're, you're, you're not supposed to do that. If it's a school issue, if it's just some other stuff, it's different. But if it's like, if Angel has on the agenda X, Y, Z, and so now you start a thread, hey, I'm, I'm wondering about X, Y, Z, and should we do this, and should we do that? And then somebody replies to all, and all of a sudden you get this whole discussion going about something that should be discussed at, at the board meeting.
But just so easily you could find yourself with that.
Yeah, it's definitely a thing, and um, so yeah, I would avoid it, I really would avoid it. Okay, so. When you start looking at board member responses to community or employee complaints, so we've gone over this before, and this is where we tell you, you know, don't get personally involved, you're on the board, you should be objective. If people have complaints against the district or issues, you know, they should go through the chain of command. So you're, the first thing is refer the citizen to the appropriate chain of command. Second thing is don't become individually personally involved. Third thing is exercise your judgment if you should notify the, the board president or the superintendent of the potentially significant complaint. So normal complaints, the best procedure is to allow them to go through the teacher, through the principal, through the director, and then sup- superintendent, and so forth. And, and board members are not equipped to solve these problems. You're, you're one person on a seven-member board. And it just will not work for you to get individually involved trying to help somebody solve a problem. So that's the theory there. Comments or questions on that? Yes?
Click also care, um, I don't know if it was just past practice or, or completely lost setup, but if you're in the middle of the process, and it comes to the point where it's coming in front of the board, um, and they've already banned a part of the process.
Right, that's where you're not objective.
Then you have major problems, and they can't-
It's hard to be objective if you've already been engaged in the whole thing. So that's what I'm saying, don't, don't do that, don't fall for that. And, and honestly, there's two sides to every story. So, I think you think you know the side, the person is adamant about this happened or whatever, but if you get yourself involved in that, all of a sudden, now there's a whole nother side that comes out, you know, and you're, you're really not being objective, so it's not a good move.
Yeah, getting burnt once is a real good lesson.
Yeah. Now, in terms of the media, um, you know, generally, we've got the superintendent and board president. And then, um, you know, the, the general rule is if you get a call from the media, you direct them to the board president. And um, and so, if you do have a statement, and, and I would just even say, the board president is not speaking on their own either. The board president is speaking after the board has spoken, so it's like there's been a board meeting, you've talked about an issue, now the board president speaks for that, the board. You know, not just on her own. Board member communication with the community, you know, we're trying to obviously get the board to communicate with the community as a board. So you've got your regular board meetings, you've got your regular communications. Uh, when you're an individual, you're not authorized, so it's just not, not happening. And then here's C, discourage from engaging in negative conversation with the public. So obviously, something happens, and somebody's upset, and so they engage you, and you really need to listen and redirect, listen and redirect. Now, the next part is about, um, administration communication with the board. So, we've, we've kind of put this down into three types of communication. One is, it's not urgent, so that's just in the board packet. Two is, it's important, so that's an email, and then three is a crisis, and that's more of a phone call, or possibly a text. Um, and so, we're saying here, the superintendent provides what, where, when, who, action, and so forth, on some kind of crisis. Um, and, and then, you know, when I had this happen to me, I've actually even had people call the board for me as we were dealing with the crisis, my secretary would call the board members, something like that, because we want the crisis to be handled, but we also want the board members to be informed, so sometimes you have to, you know, do double duty there. Um, and then in terms of information from the superintendent, board member requests. So under normal circumstances, board members request materials to inform themselves regarding upcoming agenda items, and the superintendent will comply in a timely manner. If in the board members, if, if in the superintendent's judgment, release of the information is ill-advised, superintendent would request the board member of, or would notify the board member of the disposition and attempt to resolve it. The board member still wants the information, the board president and superintendent would, would get involved and try to resolve it. So I have had this happen occasionally where a board member is asking for something that's very detailed and very particular, and it's like, it's not really related to anything going on. And so, it's like, you know, what is going on, and why do we need to do this? And sometimes there's a little interesting situation about it, because the board member just wants to be informed, and yet it's gonna cost X amount of time to put this document together. So this is where sometimes you'll get like, hey, let's talk to the board president before we go forward and, and pull this information together. Um, but certainly, uh, we generally don't want board members to FOIA information, we want board members to get information as they need it. But if the information is extraneous to what's going on, then, you know, it's like, what's going on here, why do we need to do this? You know, so that kind of stuff is why we involve the board president. Comments on that, questions?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so recently, a trustee wanted information, and they requested it, and they had to FOIA it, and they were charged. And the question was, um, when you had spoken prior, you said, any information a trustee wants to have, and obviously, they can be requested like every single day, but any information a trustee wants, they should not have to FOIA, and they should not have to pay for it. But recently, trustee Scott had to pay forty-six dollars or some change because she FOIAed information. So I was just wondering, when you had spoke earlier, you had said, even if it wasn't on the immediate agenda, we could and should be able to request information, and we might not get tomorrow, but we should have, within a reasonable time.
So, yeah, I, I think, I would say generally, I think that's, that's the case. But I did, in, in my career, and maybe I didn't, and I didn't mention it that night, I did have some board members that occasionally started requesting things that it just felt like it was not needed, you know, it was not something that was gonna further whatever, and so... So I have had that situation where I talked to the board president, said, hey, she's requested these twenty things, you know, it's gonna take us eight hours to put this together, is that what we should do? And I, and in that situation, I actually met with the trustee and the board president, you know, what's going on? I mean, what, why do we have this, this big request here? And um, so we did resolve it, so I guess I'm saying that I think if it's about agenda items, I think it should be, should be going forward, but if it's about just things that are out of the blue, it, it's, it needs to have a discussion about why are we spending staff time to do this? So that's what I would say. Um, okay, so what about new board members? Um, we might have talked about this before as well, um, about trying to, you know, keep people... As they come on the board, you're trying to get them orientated a little bit. I know Crystal and, and Rebecca were pretty new a year or so ago, or a couple of years ago. And this probably wasn't followed, I'm not gonna say it was or it wasn't, but this is what I came up with in terms of, you know, what kind of discussion might you want to have? So, review the mission, vision, and beliefs, review the goals, talk about the organization of the board, you know, talk about how does the code of conduct work, and travel, and conflict of interest. How about board procedures and, and board development opportunities? I mean, just try to give them a little bit of scoop. And, and this can be the board president and superintendent, or it could be either. Um, but the idea would be is helping them feel comfortable when they're coming on board. Um, and the same thing with officers, if there's any need for reviewing, uh, duties and responsibilities, it's nice to, to say, hey, this is what I had to do as treasurer, you know, and, and make that happen. Now, I also put in here about, you know, maybe doing some kind of team building or assessment of the board in terms of training and development. So you guys have been doing a lot of training, you know, I think you've done a fair amount, um, I've certainly done a few of them, right? And um, so I think that's good, generally. Um, but you as board president, you as superintendent should be thinking about that kind of stuff, like, should we be doing this? What should we do, just don't let it get off your radar. Um, and then in terms of board goals, so remember, I talked to you about this back in the spring, too, the difference of board goals versus district goals. So board goals are actually for the board. So things like attendance at meetings, or certain trainings, or how you treat each other, things like that. Um, and that's something that you could do as a group, um, in open session. Now, if somebody has a concern about another board member's performance, we we say that, uh, they should first discuss it with the board member. Secondly, they would discuss it with the board president. And then, uh, we do expect board members to have diverse opinions and value, uh, each other in a manner that's respectful and beneficial. So, this, you may say to yourself, hey, did he just make this up for us? And the answer is no, this is not. This is from, you know, generic, I've done this in other districts, same stuff, so don't think that. But um, this is just like, how do you did, how do you get along as a group? You know, and I know, um, you're interested in, in continuing to improve on that. So next one, three point six, is just about training and availability of conferences. Um, you should call the superintendent's office, you're certainly encouraged to do this. Um, you have to comply with board policy. And then, a good idea is always to report out, you know, what you went to, where it happened, and so forth.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So we recently voted not to send a delegate to the M A S B conference that's happening, uh, at least in Grand Rapids in November. And the reason, during discussion, it came up at how offensive the conference was, and then the possible hotel. We were then later emailed from M A S B that we could qualify our scholarship so that it wouldn't be at no cost to the district for the conference. Um, and then, so I reached out, and I asked, could I attend now? Because I wanted to go, we go to no. But now that there's a scholarship, could I attend now, you know? And I was told, no, we already voted no. But at this point, there's a scholarship to allow us to attend at no cost to the district. And I guess, like, what would be the best approach to that? Because just being told no because of me asking when it's free to the district, and I didn't ask for the district for any money, I just don't see the, the reasoning for the no.
Um, I think you're, you know, I'm not sure who you called, but I would say that your call is to the board president. And um, and you, you make your case, and uh, and see if, uh, you can convince her to put it on the agenda for, for your revote, you know, that's the kind of thing. Once the board has voted on this type of stuff, it does feel funny, and I'm trying to weigh carefully here, I'm not sure where the, um, everything goes here, but... But if you already vote on something, sometimes it feels like, hey, we can't revisit that, but if there's new information, this is the thing, when there's new information, and this is what the new thing would be, then certainly, it would be appropriate to talk to the board president about it. And then, if you were interested, you talk to Angel and see if you wanted to put it back on, I mean, that's how, how you would do that. So, I don't know what you did, but that's what I would do. Okay, um. Alright, so the next part is about oversight, and so it's the idea of goals. So you've got, you're, we did goals last spring, and I don't know how that's been going, if you've been reporting out at all? Okay, so that's good, so each year, I would say, you're kind of revisiting that, so as you report out, as you get close to the spring again, you might be thinking, hey, should we redo these, or whatever? Um, and then you've also got this idea of performance objectives for the district and school performance, um, in conjunction with the goals. So, um, school performance objectives shall be regularly presented to the board. Um, so your, the idea is, is that sometimes you get a little more detailed, and you also might give that to the board in terms of the school plans. Um, the same thing with school approval plans, these are more for review, not for approval. So the school does their own thing, and then you might show those to the board, say, hey, this is what the school is doing. Um, the next thing is the board review. So at least annually, you have to review the goals, but also, I say that you should be doing, you know, some type of progress report along the way. So we kind of talked about that. Comments on that, is that, you feel like that's going okay, or you, do you feel like you've gotten some scoop on the goals, Angel? You gave them, you gave them a report?
Yep.
And some things, I know you've got the bond issue coming up next week or whatever, and uh, that was certainly on the list way back. So that's one thing that's moving forward.
I have a question.
Yes?
So on the goals about the bond, it talked about, um, the thing that we were gonna do to remove the bond at the town hall. If town halls are not being scheduled, um, and they've been asked about repeatedly, and we're not sure if they're going to be scheduled, like, how would that affect the goals in the event if the bond were to fail?
Well, if, if the, if the bond fails, if, you know, the goal result has probably not been reached, so it's, you know, maybe, I don't remember exactly what the goal was, if it was to put it on the, if it was to put it on the ballot, or if it was actually pass a bond, but certainly, some of the strategies are in there that we want to do, so I think what we want to do is to try to trust the superintendent to the various strategies. So whether a town hall is, is a great strategy or not, I don't know, yes?
No, when you're done, uh, uh-
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, I know trustee Pever had asked, and I had been on this with her, and, and you've been here to see some of the meetings. The same parents that were protesting on the news to have the bond are the same ones now that are protesting against it. I just don't see how, uh, uh, opening that kind of words is beneficial to anybody, honestly. And so, um, I have shared, and it's not just my opinion, that we haven't seen enough upside to it, neither people in the public.
In terms of having the town hall.
So the only ones that seem to be pressing are the ones that want to have their day in the sound of the house, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, that's the point I was trying to make earlier, too, is that sometimes the town hall idea sounded good at the beginning, but maybe it's not the best strategy now, as we see the lay of the land, and so you're, you're trying to trust the administration and the superintendent for what are the strategies that are gonna best work, yeah?
I was just wondering, um, it was that, that it was the parents protesting on the news that are now protesting at the town halls. I was just wondering, when did these protests at the town halls take place, because I have never heard of that?
I didn't say they were protesting at the town halls. I said, they are, they are pushing it, they have an estimate. All I'm saying is-
You're saying that they, they have an agenda-
That are saying no.
They have an agenda of what, what, the reason they want to have a town hall, so they can-
They have their, their time in the sun.
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna try very lightly since this is a hot topic right now.
Good.
Um, I just wanna say, I don't think it's necessarily them being opposed to the bond, they, I know personally, I know the media we got for it. There's been a lot of like, things online about that hasn't been done right about the bond, and then- bond, and then who's in charge of handling the campaign is where we have some upsets with the community, and not necessarily the bond itself.
Yeah, and so one of the things is the how to get to where you want to go. So maybe everybody wants the bond to pass that you're talking to, but people are afraid that the strategies or the how to get there is not effective enough. And so then it seems like there's dissension. But as a board, what I would say is that you're trusting that the superintendent and the team is putting out the best foot to try to get this thing passed. Everybody has the same goal to try to get it passed. So sometimes, like, as I can give you my experiences, we used to have discussions about yard signs or not, you know? Should we put yard signs out? And then, or should we send a postcard out? Should we do this? Should we do that? So there was lots of different opinions. So ultimately, certain decisions were made, and then that's what we did. But, you know, part of it is trying to trust the people that are trying to run the campaign, whether it's superintendent, or there's a team of people, a committee of people, usually there's a committee of some sort. But I will say there's a lot of differences of opinion about what things are most effective. And sometimes, like when you say a town hall, for example, that can turn out negative for people because you get people that are there that are trying to sabotage it. And so you have this good intention of getting the word out and everything is going good, and then all of a sudden, what gets on the news is that there's all these people against it. And so even though that's maybe not even the case, so now all of a sudden, you've, instead of furthering your cause, you've actually hurt your cause by getting that negative publicity. So there's reasons why to be cautious about things. And I will just say too, as I did this work for many years, we went back and forth over various strategies. And I know that we decided at one point, yard signs was not a good idea. It just was too visible, and it caused problems. And so we decided for the postcard idea, and we tried to identify yes voters and things like that. But I will say, you know, in terms of my history of bond issues, I passed one by four votes and one by like 11 votes. I mean, it was crazy, and I was so thankful, but it was like, hey, it could've gone either way. So I just know that it doesn't do any good to have everyone from the chief seat saying, oh, we should be doing this, or we should be doing this. Let's just let them do it, and then see how the result turns out. Then if the result is poor, then, all right, next time, what should we do different? Let's review. Let's review what we did. Let's review what maybe we could've done, and let's decide some better strategies for the next time. Yes, ma'am.
I think you're misunderstanding. A lot of people think that Mr. Kimball is running the campaign for the bond. All he did is make a page on Facebook to promote the bond. Marketing, the company, there's a company that's doing all the yard signs, all the wonderful flyers. He's got a couple articles in CNG. They're very self-explanatory. So it's not Mr. Kimball that's running this bond.
Okay.
It's just he made a page on Facebook to let everybody know. It's for the board, it's for the meeting.
Well, and that's good to know. And I will say too, when I said Angel, usually a superintendent is not the face of the campaign because of, you know, there's some reasons for that. But usually, if you have a committee or you have a marketing firm that's trying to do various things, just support them. Let them work on it, and then see what happens. Yes, Crystal?
I was just saying, the assumption was me, because the superintendent told us that Mr. Kimball was on the committee and running it, and one of the committee members had reached out to us, asking a specific question. If the bond passes and the schools were shut down, would the taxpayers still be liable for the bond? And several times it was asked here to respond, and, you know, to reach out to the committee, which was Mr. Kimball. So that's where the assumptions come from, because he's referring everybody back to...
Well, I, you know, the, whether it's about, there's some, he's that, I asked him, because he's the expert at bonds, so I asked him to answer questions. Absolutely, I did ask him. I also have reached out to you guys before, because the district does not, just to correct that, we don't hire the marketing. They donate money to the finance committee, and they... The committee hires them. And he, Mr. Kimball absolutely understands bonds, understands knowledge, right? I was seeking input, and I needed help from experts, because I myself cannot do it. So I opened it up, I asked people, some people said they would, but then nothing came of it. So I needed somebody. So I did reach out. It's not a... And so, I don't want to get into a huge discussion on this, but the firm that you hired, that the committee hired, is the one that's really running the campaign?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah. And so, so the answer to the question about bonds, though, is the district as an entity has, does bonds, I mean, then the district is responsible for the bonds, I mean, that's for sure. Yes?
I just wanted to say, I'm laughing because on August 28th, well, first of all, for two weeks before August 28th, the superintendent repeatedly sent emails saying he was looking for somebody to be on the, or some people be on the bond committee. I immediately responded to that email. About a week later, he sends another email, like a weekly update, he says, I have not gotten, received any help with the bond, or some version of that. I responded with Mr. Kulahead, I said I would do it. August 28th, he said, trustee Chambliss, you, trustee App, and trustee Holcomb will be on the bond committee. You should receive more information in about a week. I have never received any more information. So it's not that people said they would and then didn't. It's people said they would, and then he chose different.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna move on from the bond, and I do wish you well, and I think it's a good project for you, of course. But when you start looking at some of these other reviews of the board reviewing the programs, you're trying to say that we're doing it in regard to the students. And so, but we are saying that board members would get a copy of whatever the thing is being reviewed. And so certainly, like athletics could be reviewed as well. You know, development of the budget is 4.8. And the idea of having a finance committee is in here, I don't know if that's accurate or not, this is my work, but you could certainly say, hey, that's not really what we do.
We had it before.
You have had it before?
And we had members who wanted it resolved.
And so, anyway, that's kind of on the finance committee there. Each year, you get an annual budget to review. This next one is about board member building visits. And I don't know, again, if you're doing this or not, but this is the idea of, if you're not really attending a regular activity, like a concert or something, you would notify the principal before you go. So you're a board member, it's upsetting and disruptive if you attend, if you just go to a building and say, hey, I'm here to visit, you know, that would be disruptive. So this kind of says, hey, call the principal. And then you're certainly not individually able to observe for the purpose of evaluating. So you would never do that. Okay, page 13. Now you're into like, how do you review policy? So this, again, might be a policy committee, or it certainly could be at the full board. And again, you're developing policies as you're given to them by the NEOLA maybe, or if there's some need that the administration brings. All policies have to be approved by the board, as Joe said earlier. You have a first reading and then a second reading. You can approve them after the second reading. So you just need two meetings, really. Now, the next one is about evaluation superintendent. So this part A is from the law, that you will do this annually. My understanding is you usually do this in December. So that's coming up, so you should be thinking about how you're gonna do that, Cindy. That would be you kind of thinking that through, and then letting the board know. If you have concerns about superintendent performance, this is something that you witnessed. This is the idea, that you would talk directly to superintendent. And then if that didn't resolve the issue, you would talk to the board president. In terms of hiring other personnel, the board does not directly hire the other personnel. I mean, you might approve them or appoint them, but you're generally allowing that to go through the process with the principals and the superintendent. And so sometimes, that's done under consent agenda, as I put out there. So this last page is, this must be your own policy? Or is this what?
You don't have a last page?
No, I just, no, I'm asking something, something. Do you know what you mean by that? So kind of slots questions. I know, in a way, you might say, well, I don't know, this is, this is just a bunch of stuff. But the idea is, is that if you do these kinds of procedures, you're going to find that your board will function better. Comments, thoughts?
I just have a few questions for clarification. In the thing, it says that we should ask for questions to our superintendent ahead of time so that he could be prepared, you know, so that I'm not, you know, giving him a surprise in a meeting with a question.
Yes.
And then it went from that to he'd rather us ask him at a board meeting. And then it was back to email, and then it was not answering my questions, to just ask him at a board meeting. So I just, I don't know what I'm supposed to do. So I just, clarification.
All right. Angel, thoughts on that? I generally would say you want to get the questions ahead of time, so that you're a little better prepared for the board meeting.
If they have questions regarding the agenda, the upcoming agenda, I prefer them via email.
To me, I'm sorry, you prefer them what?
If they have questions on an upcoming agenda, I ask them via email, so I can be prepared.
Okay, so via email, prior to the board meeting, so you can be prepared. They can also ask it at the board meeting, if needed?
If they want to.
Or you're gonna cover it in your background information?
Technically, I don't know, if I don't know what they're asking, I won't have an answer for them if they're asking that same day of the meeting.
But if they, if you get it prior to the board meeting, you'll try to research it and have an answer that night.
If they want to be there, they won't be there aggressive.
Yeah, I'm not saying for like an immediate, tell me right now, answer, but just so that...
I think the best policy, and this is what I think all of you should do, is you get the agenda on Thursday, you look it over, by Friday, you got a couple of questions, you shoot them off to the superintendent, he has a chance to review them, and then he can answer them at the board meeting to everybody.
Well, I could answer them, if they send them to me by Friday night, I could answer them in the Sunday update.
Okay.
But if they're coming in...
On Monday?
One day, then it's kind of...
Then it's at the board meeting.
It's kind of late to answer, because we're already running operations in the morning, so I don't have time to do...
Yeah. So that's the thought, is try to do them a little early, answer them on Sunday night, but then you can also answer them Monday night at the board meeting. I mean, the idea is, is that if you have a question, Crystal, other people probably have that question. And so it's helpful to have that prior, so you can answer it. I used to formulate my background sometimes off of questions that I had gotten, and I would say, and this, and this, you know, so you'd have this full thorough background of the situation to help inform the whole board and the public that are listening, based on some comments that people made during the weekend.
Yeah, I just, I agree with asking them at that time. I just think sometimes, from just where things are at right now, questions are taken as, you know, an attack, and it's definitely not my intention, and so I don't want to cause any more divide by saying, you know, hey, can you tell me this, and he's taking that, or someone else is taking it like, you know, the wrong way. Because you can hear my tone over messages, so...
True.
And that's what happened.
Well, I would say, if it's about the board, there's two or three or four action items on the board agenda, and you've got a couple of questions, certainly appropriate, email them to the superintendent, you know, on Friday or Saturday, and that's really what you should do, if you can. Yes?
I was just wondering, does that apply to all trustees? Because currently, there is three that weren't supposed to email unless we talked to them, or were supposed to only talk to them at meetings.
I'm sorry, you're only supposed to talk to them?
At meetings.
At meetings. I think it should apply to everybody. I think that, you know, I mean, I've seen some emails, and sometimes there's just too many, there's so many questions and so many things, it's like, it's just, you know, it feels like too much. And so what I would say is that if there are questions about the board agenda, it should be fine. You know, if it's questions about a lot of different things, then that makes it more problematic. Yes?
I think the blurred line becomes, we're held accountable and told that our duty as a trustee is to correct misinformation that we see, and if we don't correct it, we're allowing it to spread. So then when we come with those questions, whether they're not something about the agenda, but we're told you need to correct things that are being said that are misinformation, we're kind of given a double-edged sword, because if we don't correct it, we get accused of not asking the district. If we do go with the information and ask for it, we're now asking about things that are not on the agenda. And then it becomes a battle, words get said, and now three trustees are told, just talk to me at meetings.
Well, I would think that if there's misinformation out there, sometimes the best way to deal with it is to let the superintendent know there's misinformation. But then you don't have to do it. I mean, you don't, it's like giving the heads up, here's what's happening, and then let him do it. It's kind of this blurred line between what's the board member's job and what's the superintendent's job? The board member's job is not to do all of this stuff that feels like it's daily. The board member's job is to be at board meetings and do the governance and the oversight of the district. And so that's where it feels like, when there's all these, if there's all these points, it's like it's too much, it's like it's too day-to-day, if that makes sense. So I do think you all should be treated equally and the same, and you should be trying to develop procedures and protocols that will help you be productive. And back to the original question, should you ask questions when you get the board packet? The answer is yes, and you should do it within a day or so, a couple days, and then let him get those questions and be able to answer them, either in Sunday update or at the board meeting on Monday. And if you don't get the answer right away, just wait a little bit, because the point is, is that the board action on Monday night is what you're looking for. If that makes sense. Mark, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about Mr. Kimball, you know, everybody wants to throw his name up, so I'm gonna bring it up. He's not very politically correct when he speaks.
Okay.
He's to the point. But I'll tell you what, if it wasn't for Mr. Kimball, Mr. Adoel, Mrs. I, Mrs. Thompson, and Mrs. Castle, this district would be in big trouble. If it wasn't for them, they're the ones that got us off the statewide list, and they got us above water. So as far as Mr. Kimball goes, I think he's a good guy, he's doing his job.
He's also not spreading things about your family and mine either.
Well, I would hope nobody is doing that type of thing, and I've seen some of that, and I don't agree with it. I meant to say again, I think people should be taking the high road, and they should be treating each other with respect and getting off of all this personal business. And certainly, it doesn't help the district move forward when there's too much of this personal stuff. So I would like to get off of that and get onto the business of the district. Somebody had their hand up. Gloria?
It's just my personal opinion, but everything Mr. Kimball has put on...
It's just my personal opinion, but everything Mr. Kimball has put on his website, he has backed up with documentation. I mean, you read it, it's documented, it's through the state. How do you disagree with him?
Well, and so my, my thing is, is like, don't, um, I don't even like any of the social media business. You know, it's like, who cares about what people say on social media?
Um, I had a couple of...
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, first of all, I know we had talked about when we were doing our training before, um, maybe adjusting our public comments. Um, we never did anything with it. So, I'm sorry? Oh. Um, so we never did anything with that, so maybe we need to relook at that? Or are there some new, heavier verbiage we can use?
Oh, yeah, I had that in my one, uh, presentation from before.
Yeah.
Present, yeah. And I do think there's a, uh, thing that you can put right on your agenda that is helpful for it. And, uh, and I would take that off of that presentation and just use it.
Okay. Um, and then is that something we have to adopt? This one, for whatever reason, has been read for decades.
Yeah, I mean, usually, yes, usually if you're gonna have a, uh, a thing that you're gonna adopt as a board, you can put it in your policies. If you look up your public participation policy, you'll probably see some version of that, maybe. And, um, and so, yeah, I actually adopted it and had our rules written on a policy. And then I took a paragraph out of that and put it on the agenda for every, every night, for every board meeting.
Okay, and I think...
So, I, is this being streaked?
Yep.
There's also being recorded.
It's also being recorded.
Any... Just curious about those two justices.
I think it was about the discussion there, you know, obviously they're not concerned with that, with that discussion. So I think you guys should stick to board business and all of this social...
Look, we get it, but, but you know yourself. I have never gone online and yet the horrendous things that are said about me.
I don't have anything on my page except verbiage.
Good for you. I know, I know where you're coming from, I'm with you. I just think that when this stuff is going on and, and if they view that you support it, that's, that's problematic. And so I think what, what we want to do is try to support the board. This is our board, this is what we have, this is how we're trying to move forward. I, I get it, I know there's some doubt sometimes and I appreciate you guys working so hard at this. I really wish you luck on your, on your bond. I, I hope that that can pass. And, um, and I hope you can keep moving forward against some of this, this stuff and try to keep putting one foot in front of the other. You know, stay off of social media. I hear you. You're probably not a big guy on social media either, right?
No, I'm not, I'm not.
I, I, you know what I do? Watch, but don't participate. You know, that's it. You know, and some of it, I don't even watch.
I'm full of it, I'm very, very...
Me have been asking for opportunity out here.
I know, I know you have. I'm with you.
So, I, it's crazy. But I think, I'm gonna, I think, I can't, well, I can't speak for him, but a lot of it is to try to help our superintendent survive.
Yeah.
Absolutely pay time.
Well, I, I appreciate that and, um, I think that, you know, obviously you guys working together is gonna help, help Angel and you just keep, gotta do, gotta do some things that you need to do. Keep it going.
I have one other, maybe you can give me a little bit more direction on us in general. Um, with the, I don't know how many it was, um, more than 10, um, MHSAA violations. It seemed like more than 300 OMA violations. It's like, just because it's sad doesn't make it real. You've never been guilty of any of it. And so how do you, uh, trying to take the high road is frustrating when you don't, you... How do you respond and say, "Look, I can say there's an OMA violation and it doesn't make it true. You're not an attorney, that's your opinion."
Yeah, I think that, I do think just by taking the high road doesn't mean that you don't refute allegations that are improper. And so sometimes, yeah, you might have to say, "That has not been proven and we're not accepting that and that's not, that's not how we're rolling," or whatever. I mean, certainly if there's an announcement, if you've been investigated, like by MHSAA and found that there was no violations, you could make that announcement at some point. And, and, but you do it in a respectful and, in my way, the high-road manner of, of doing what you think is right and not, not going down into the gutter, so to speak, and, and so forth. Mark?
But at the same token, right? They sat here, two of them, run down the guy. And by us not saying nothing, we're agreeing with him. I'm not gonna agree with him.
I agree.
Because the man, like I said, I come right out and told him he's a very arrogant person. Do his thing. But he knows what he's talking about. He got this district out of the hole. And with these people's help, Mr. Adulha's help, we sit here and they beat up on him. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna take it. The higher road's long, I'm not doing it.
Well, I, I don't necessarily, Mark, think that that's not taking the high road when you just state the facts and state them in a, in a respectful manner. And you are allowed to have your own opinion, just like they are, you know? And I think they feel attacked too because of whatever. And so if they don't want to sit here and, and have the discussion, that's their, their right as well. But I don't think that anything was done wrong tonight. I appreciate that, I think people did kind of be respectful to each other, even though there were some differences on that one issue. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
Mr. Smith? Did we get teeth off the counter before we started?
No, they actually, we intended on eating it in the back.
Oh, do you have a public comment, Mr. Smith?
Are we done? Mr. Green, are we done? Anybody?
We are done, as far as I'm concerned. Did you wanna, did you wanna speak?
Since you invited me. I had an opportunity to be an elected trustee on our retirement system some years ago and administer that system. Uh, we managed well worth of $100 million on one plan and $250 million on another plan. And we made multimillion dollar decisions on a regular basis. And our group, just like your group, is there to support and represent the members of that plan. Not a faction, not somebody else. And that was, that was pounded into our heads. And I never had to deal with the kind of things I've seen in these meetings in the last three years. You know, we operated the way these rules were laid out for me tonight. And we functioned very well as a result of that. Um, we did have disagreements and some people occasionally had agendas, but we worked through it and there was no, certainly wasn't any internet, uh, social media slander. And, uh, so, um, the rules worked. And you've heard me say it more times than you can count. Civility gets the job done. You don't want big legal bills? Be simple, you know, work with people. You can have differences in opinion without being ugly. And I'm preaching to the choir, you guys already know this. None of you folks even probably even care about social media to speak of, other than you want to, you know, talk to your kids once in a while and your grandkids, you know? Other than that, you know? So this stuff works. And I really appreciate everything that you had to say tonight and, uh, wholeheartedly support it. And I hope that, uh, these will help maybe get things moving forward. I'm happy to see that the board president is able to control the meetings and see to it that they are managed for the benefit of the, of the community, not for certain individuals to come in here and just net. So, uh, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I'm looking at a good group of public servants here. Hope that, you know, we can bring this bond across the finish line too. And, uh, because, again, at the end of the day, it's for all the kids. You know, that's who we're trying to look out for at the end of the day. So I hope that happens and glad to see you making the effort on, uh, making these procedures work for everyone. Thanks.
Thank you. And, um, I just wanted to reiterate, I've been talking about it before. Um, I asked for a judgment, um, just on the record, I did sign the, I went with Clark Hill. I have it, there was an adjustment to the price. I have heard no one disagreed with it. Um, I just wanted to make sure it was out in the open, um, before I signed the, the second copy. So with that, um, I want to...
That's for, alright, trustee Thompson and trustee App. And roll call, please.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Ayer?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Leading a, uh, date blue night. It was, uh, very...
You're far with it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thanks so much.
Sometimes taking the high road sounds like a swear word.